I'd like to call. We're going, we're working.
Yeah.
Planning board meeting for the town of Freetown, Tuesday, December 17th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Let the record reflect the members who are here. And we are recording this on Zoom. Is anybody recording this out in the studio audience? No. Agenda item number one, continued definitive subdivision 11 Walnut Street, applicant Michael Bisho. Excuse me if I'm not pronouncing that correctly. Owner Michael and Aaron Bisho. Representative Robert Peruzzi. Mount Hope Engineering Incorporated. Scope of work. Free lot subdivision. We had the discussion at the last meeting. And it was a question Gary brought up, and you were going to address that.
Yes.
If you could be so kind to state your name for the record and.
Robert Peruzzi, Mount Hope Engineering. Well, I have some more.
Okay.
Mail.
All right.
Unbelievable, I guess, or uncollected.
Yeah.
Last time I get their third notice, they're tired of going to post office.
Small one, anybody want, or you guys are good? Yeah, you can.
Concerned at the last meeting was the amount of fill and grading. Lower the profile of the road.
That would be reflected on this?
Yes.
Using concrete block in there?
Just on one side. There were, it's kind of the deepest part is.
Yeah.
I can't really put concrete block before the pipe, pipe crossing.
Existing pipe, yeah.
Yeah, because we jammed right up against the gassy easement there.
No. That was the only change on this, these plans since, okay. And it's only reflected in this drawing, or is it reflected?
It seems like the grading as well. I also. The roadway. Foot and a half from property line.
Which property line?
The one that these folks are concerned about.
The spike strip.
The spike strip, which you're not. Yeah. That's gonna be.
I didn't change the property line or anything like that. I just, the grading, the surface.
Yeah, so you're not putting like a whole nother wall line. And so what, when you call the spike strip? Yeah, you're just moving the road over.
Just, just the surface.
Doesn't change any lot lines. That's a spike strip, is when you have two lot lines again with a narrow. Yeah. Easement that opens up.
I see.
Into a whole big thing in the back.
Okay.
This is just the road.
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with law.
Because that's not.
That's a spike strip.
Spike strip is not allowed in, in.
No, I wouldn't, wouldn't propose something like.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The, the property line, most of it is a stone wall, and it's a common wall.
Yep.
Split between the two owners. So I'm just pulling it foot and a half away so that we get a little bit of space there against the wall.
Okay. Questions from the board? Comments? Anything? No? Gary, anything? You're good with the changes that were, yeah? Nobody? Everybody else? So to address your comments that you made at the last meeting, there is nothing about. A. A setback off of your property. And.
There was supposed to be a 10-foot setback for a private room.
I don't think so. Where is the?
Massachusetts.
But I don't think that's in our zoning. Are you aware of anything like that? No?
No. The road I live on, Townley Drive in Berkeley, is right up against property line.
Yeah.
This is Freetown.
This is Freetown. Yeah, no, I didn't think there was, we had anything in our, our rules. And your other question was on the notification, and the rule is. They're only required to notify, not collect back the notifications. The idea there is. They send it to a mailbox and somebody's in Florida for six months. They're not gonna hold up. Subdivision plan and approval. By not getting that, but that's, I talked to town council about that as well.
The bigger concern was that our name unfortunately, which we took up with the postmaster.
So that, that's on you to do that, yeah. That, I, that I. I would feel concerned about, yeah, but that's not, that's not, that's out of our hands, and there was nobody else in your house that would have signed for that.
She came to the house and admitted that she.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, you'll, you'll have an issue with them, I guess.
Honestly, I have an issue with this road going up, which from my property.
But there's.
I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's appropriate.
But that's the way it is. That's, he is, they can, they have the right to develop this property.
So they have the right to put a road right next to my property? So if I find something in either our bylaws or the state of Massachusetts bylaws that states something differently, I will bring it up to the board because I don't think this is right. I don't think they should be able to put a road a foot from my property. Which is all, you know. True.
Right.
Because what happens when they put this road in and then my trees die because they've dug up the roots? That's what the 10-foot setback is supposed to protect you from.
I do not know how to answer that question. But we don't, as far as I can tell, in our bylaws, we do not have a 10-foot setback at all.
So I, you know, I'd like it on record that I have a problem with this.
Yep. Your name.
On record that if, you know, my trees die because they've dug up a road, we're gonna have an issue.
You'd have to take that up with the homeowner.
Well, and the board here is allowing it.
Can she just say her name and?
Yeah, sorry, your name for the, for the record, please.
Christine Johansson.
Thank you. I'm also not sure what, if you have any rights to that road, if it goes in along the property line, in terms of access through it. That would have to be taken up with a land attorney. It's a private road, but I don't, I don't know if that would.
What does that mean?
If you would have access from that private road into your property legally. But that's something you'd have to review with an attorney, and it would have to go through land court or whatever. I don't know.
Okay, and how did we determine that the stone wall was shared between the two properties? Was it survey?
No, I'm survey. Yes, I read the deeds. They both referred to stone wall. It's common practice that stone walls are shared between the adjacent owners.
Yeah, I have, I have a stone wall on my property, it's the same thing. Any other comments you'd like to make for the record?
That we're against this, that we don't feel that it's okay to do this, that it was kind of shoved through and we, you know, unfortunately this summer we weren't able to participate in the process. You know, it was unfortunate about the.
Well, that failed, that, that was withdrawn, so that's.
Yeah, no, it's just, well, because they're. Basically, what I heard in the last meeting was this was already approved, so the new one is it should go right through. That's why I read the last meeting.
I wouldn't say that. We were trying to gauge what, how much differentiation was with the, with the work we had done reviewing it before versus this one.
Just gonna have to focus that they can put a color sign on a gas line.
Well, that, they got the variance from the. The energy company to do that.
We keep this up, we're gonna be just like Somerset. There's gonna be a house, and then a house, and then a house, and we're gonna have those we can't want.
They have a right to develop the property, so that's. There are lots of the right size, everything conforms to, to the standard, so.
I think it's pretty cheap. So I'll look up the state setback because I'm sure it applies.
Okay. Does the board have any further comments, questions? So I would like a motion to close the public meeting. Motion's been made and seconded to close the public meeting for 11 Walnut Street subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Now I need a motion to either accept or deny the subdivision.
I'll make a motion.
Vote to accept?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and accepted and seconded to accept the. Subdivision of land 11 Walnut Street, map 211 lot 45, Freetown, Massachusetts, dated. Revised date, December 13th, 2024. Any other comments from the board, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, nay. Abstentions. So subdivision's been approved.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna, we're, we're having staffing issues in the planning board, so. I'm not sure if you wanna. Try to push this tomorrow or Thursday and. Get the ball rolling.
Push what?
What, what, is there anything else further that he has to do? That.
I don't know.
Conservation commission here.
Ah, okay. Okay.
And then as a, now 28 years period.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just sitting here because I don't wanna.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. That's fine.
Yeah.
Yep, I, I, you're perfectly welcome to sit here. We don't have a big, big agenda. Okay, so you still waiting for Concom?
Yes.
When's that going? That?
No, I don't think that's till the, almost the end of January.
Oh.
Because they don't, we, they don't meet the week of Christmas.
Oh, that's right.
And then the January 13th meeting got pushed, got canceled because of a town meeting being scheduled.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna be until the end of January anyways.
Oh, you're on the Concom, right?
Yeah, so it's the end of January now. I think January 27th is.
Okay, the calendar for second, fourth, and then I didn't even consider the Christmas.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Yep, thank you. All right, agenda item number two, discussion and take action relative to the draft of the master plan. So. I'm hoping you had a chance to at least peruse it and see if there's anything that you guys don't agree with or violently. Or opposed to. We're having a meeting tomorrow night, the master plan committee. I was, I hoped to have that before this meeting. Again, the master plan is just a guide. It's, it's their thoughts and. Suggestions based on data that they've collected, what they see in town. It's. It, it, it can be useful if you're going for certain monies or grants. If you don't have one, you're not eligible. So at some point in the new year, I, I'm hoping to. Have us approve this. But we are running out of funding from, for CERP. They have to get their. All their changes and everything done by the end of the month, and then they have to, we have to advertise it. And. Have a public meeting on it and all that good stuff, so. I, I went through it over the weekend and. Sent them a few copies, mostly. Editorial, a couple of questions, but. Does anybody have any other further comments? If they either wanna me to pass on to them, or. You're welcome to meet, show up for the meeting tomorrow. It's here, right?
Yeah.
It's here, yeah. It's a lot of. A lot of boilerplate to read, but it's pretty in-depth with what they looked up. I did tell them that the picture of the four corners is, is no longer valid now that the red house is gone. I did tell them that. So. If there's anything, otherwise, I'll assume you guys are okay with what we have here, and I'm not sure what the committee tomorrow will pick up on, but I can't believe there's gonna be a lot of changes. Anything? Everybody's pretty good with it? Okay. Number three, any other business to properly come before the board? So. I did. I had a phone call with the town council on Friday. Literally at the exact same time that the state released draft guidelines for ADUs. Literally, they came out at 9:30, and that's exactly when I had my meeting. Anyway. Um. She cut, and there was a. And there is a. Zoom meeting recording of it on, of, of their, they had another meeting on Monday. There is a Zoom meeting re, recording of it online somewhere, if anybody wants to review it, but. EO HLC is supposed to release, we're gonna have to revise our byline, bylaws because they obviously want, are asking for. A lot of things that are verboten now, like owner occupied. Certain square footage. Parking and stuff like that. A lot of these. Rules are. Are no longer applying, and they did say that they're going to come out with a sample bylaw. Now. It took them four months after. Approving this to come out with, you know, this, this information. I don't know when the bylaw is, the sample bylaw is gonna come out. But clearly, we need to come up with something for June town meeting. To get, otherwise. You know, be the wild west out there. And she said, they probably, you probably can't apply parts of the current bylaw. You're gonna have to. There's certain things you can, we can put up, we can put up, we can apply short-term rental guides on ADUs. But we have to allow attached, detached. And you have to allow a six, 900 foot or 50% of the square footage of the main house by right. Let's see. And they have. It, it's allowed in any way, the way she described it, she said it's allowed anywhere where you can build a single-family home. So that's our residential, our village residential, our general. I'm not sure about business. The by right. We can put some guidelines, like I said, on it, like we wanna limit short-term rental. She says to say, don't say things like, have it look like the, the surrounding. How, have it fit into the surrounding neighborhood. That's not, that's not very concrete and it's hard to. Judge. You know, restrict something based on that. But if, if we wanna add in certain things, they will work with us. But the, the one is by right. Is, is by right. Multiple ADUs. Are by special permit, and you can add different restrictions on that. Then, of course, you have. Currently existing ADUs, they're more than the by right. Means they have to retain the current, the current permit. Process, and then somebody could come in and put a, a by right one on top in that same lot. You've got non-conforming. You know, like a house in a business district, we, we don't normally allow it. She said we could force that one to be perhaps under a special permit. So there's a whole bunch of, there's a whole bunch of issues that. Really up in the air on some of this stuff. Town has to submit annual report on. Town has to submit annual report on, um, the number of ADUs approved and rejected every year. She says you could have site plan review, but you don't have it for a standard single-family home, so they kinda are saying, you know, if you don't, whatever you don't have for standard single families, you know, you might you wanna drag down two boards to, to review a, a nine-hundred-foot ADU. The setbacks and things that, you can't make anything more restrictive than what's in the zone. So you can't, if, if it's a ten-foot setback, you can't say an AD has to be twenty. You, you can't do that sort of thing. Parking space, if you're less than a half a mile from a train station, you don't have to have, require a parking space. A bus line, a bus route is actually, not just a bus station, but the bus route itself is considered like, with stops, is considered like at the half a mile, so kind of extends things. It's, there's some really, um, let's see. Could have rules like exterior stairs may not be visible, so you could do things like that. I think we, we may have that in our current bylaw or something. But it could be an attached, it could be a detached, it could be a, a redone garage, it could be something she called hidden. I can't remember what she meant by that. So that's something we have on the docket for the beginning of the year. Um, I would advise you, if you can get a chance to, to listen to that, um, that Zoom meeting, they go over a bunch of stuff, but I was, I'm really hoping to come out with a sample bylaw that we can have. The attorney suggested we take our current bylaw and do a strike and replace, but I think it's so far, maybe we could get the, the one that we had hoped to bring to town meeting last, uh, spring. Maybe we should take that and strike and replace on that one, because that already takes some of the, um, restrictions out. Yeah, I don't know how many we have in town right now. I don't, how many, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna be a stampede. And I'm not sure what we can really do come February second, which is when the law goes into effect. They can move a proper plan, by right, they go right in there. So think about what we'd like on that if we want. Should we do the one we had before? And probably should have another joint meeting with zoning board, because they're still gonna be involved in this if it was a special permit. I'm assuming, that's a good question, actually, whether zoning board would get the special permit, or was that gonna be the planning board? I guess that could be up to us. Any questions, any comments on any of those? Have you heard of any talk about people wanting to put any of these in, or?
Um, I'm sure you'll see some people put them in. I think we, biggest thing's parking, you know, I mean, not having at least one spot, and then definitely walk the enclosed stairway and just try and make it blend in as much as possible into a one-family atmosphere.
It can be detached.
Yeah, either that, but even just, I think someone would make it easy. We should have its own parking if it's detached, if you have enough room to.
As long as it's not within a half a mile. You only, you can only require one parking spot. You can't require two.
Yeah, one's fine. I'm, I'm hoping a lot of these are single.
Nine hundred square feet is pretty.
Yeah, small, I'm hoping it's.
Stop and shop, you don't need any parking spots, so you can.
I think that's crazy, but.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. Hoping you don't see anything that down there go in.
Wow.
I hope. But that's just the bad design of having to see it down, see them hauling cars from the coal pile to the, to the tree.
I mean, they still have to, they still have to follow setbacks, they still have to follow septic. One of the topics come up is whether, you know, separate utilities, well. It's for your in-laws or something? Do you want, I don't know. I don't know if that should have separate, a separate billing utilities, not, obviously.
Well, what people have to do is take one bedroom out of their house, and they can make a garage into a pocket.
Right, because their septic will accept.
Right. So you take one bedroom out, you put it made into a den.
Yeah, no, I.
Without having to upgrade your septic. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Nothing we can do that on the state of Massachusetts, so, yeah, no one's saying.
We have to put in a lot for four? Four bedrooms, septic?
For a house?
A house in town now.
You don't know?
It was like a roof, you could put whatever you wanted.
Yeah, I think it all goes to like three bedroom.
Is it three bedrooms?
Is it a three?
Yeah. Thought it was a four for some reason. It's already planned, I would buy, mine is a, a three-bedroom. No.
I, I mean, there was nothing about it being well, I actually didn't ask her, but I didn't hear anything about it being on a I mean, I don't know if you brought in a trailer, plunked it down. Does it have to be on a foundation? I
Yeah, that, that, no, and then that, that goes, uh, we should look into it, but I think that falls under being a portable, just like you can have like, uh, difference between like a shed and a garage, is one's not, it's not on a slab.
Yeah.
Right? I think that's what considers it.
That would be something to look into, to see what those laws should be defined. Yeah, what laws we have on, on the books for a portable trailer like that, yeah.
I do, I have no idea. And, um, uh, right, anything else? Any other comments or questions?
Can I find out anything about?
Oh, the I did ask her, and she said it's, it's us that has to, you know, make the effort if we wanna but she said everything's different, everyone's different, because I mentioned there's one in town that's been twenty years old, and it's but it's, effectively, it's the planning board's bailiwick, yeah, but she said it may not make financial sense, and she, I didn't talk to her that long ago because I wanted to do this ADU stuff, but.
We have to put her on the planning board.
To get what? Well, probably would have to do some, we'd have to do something, we'd have to look into it, do our homework first.
Well, we're gonna have to do that. Twenty years and two-lawn, we keep it going just.
Yeah.
The town wants that last property for a pump station. I asked the other day, when he was giving a presentation on the sewer line extension. And I said, how can you propose this, we don't even own the property yet? So, then Teddy says, we're gonna own it before this happens.
But she mentioned, she said something about, uh, they may have paid money in in lieu of the lots, there may be some money on the books, and so, you know, it has to be investigated. She goes, we'd be happy to investigate if you bring us all the documentation. Well, I have to find out if, I don't know how town council gets paid. I don't know if it's, if we have a, a, they're on retainer, and we just, uh, keep sending them whatever we want, or is it?
This is what I need to see how it, nobody even knows.
Nobody knows.
The whole thing, okay, but yet we're still accepting pieces of property to keep doing more developments, when they all fall into the same category afterward. No one can collect it.
No one could, yeah.
The guy doesn't have to bother to finish the development, because they can just say, hey, it's not worth it to me anymore, it's been twenty years, that one little piece of property is not gonna amount to anything, and they walk away, and then the town stop.
And in that, then, it, at some point, it's probably on, on our, on our plate, that we, you know, after two years, hey, you know, what
Right.
You know, fish or cut bait, yeah.
Twenty years ago, twenty years ago, it would have been worth taking those two pieces of property, because you probably would have been able to finish what you wanted to do, but now twenty years later, what do you do now? The roads fall all apart now, and so now, now the town needs to accept it, fix the whole thing.
And it, it's unknown how, how you acquire that property. It might have to go through a, a bunch of, a whole legal thing, so I don't know.
It's really messed up now, because there is no more.
Correct, the entity's gone, yeah.
There is no Bob Vienna till.
I know. If the entity is gone, I know, so, so it's, it's it, it's probably an extreme example.
Yeah.
But still.
They can all end up there.
It could, yeah. So it, it's on us to, to really stay on top of it, if they don't.
I mean, because before, when I used to call and complain, the town administrator used to say, well, that's your problem, because you live on that road, and I'm like, who means my problem? I'm paying the same taxes. Everybody else pays, I'm like, I, like I said, maybe I should just pay my taxes to Bob Vienna. And they're like, no, you can't do that. I'd be like, well, you're telling me to go to him and complain, but I'm paying you the tax money. It doesn't make any sense, the way the whole thing went.
Yeah, there's a long sordid history there, and.
But it doesn't seem like anybody wants to fix it either, it just keeps kicking down the road.
Yeah.
I think the board's gone from that time, and everyone in the town involved in it, right, so it's like, it's just, you know. I mean, we haven't had another development like that happen since. Now is the first one in town, you know, besides, like, bank shores and stuff.
She, she all, I, because I said it, the, the, the bus goes down there, and the, the streets are plowed, and she said, they don't, you know, usually, yeah, that's, that's
She had the postal picked up and postal, and you put mailboxes up there now. The whole, whole place picks up, the bus goes up and now, it's no problem, the trash pickup, it's all them.
They, they've done everything but except the room, you know, and I get that. I mean, I think the town should just take it, but it's, it's something, yeah, they all have it.
Well, we need a member on the board to honcho that. That sounds a good job for you. We'll go, we'll go to that, uh, postal worker sign there, holy smokes. That's a fed, that's a federal offense, isn't it?
Yeah, she came and she admitted that.
No, that's, that's like jail time, that's bad.
Yeah.
A good, they, lady went back, like, because that's pretty bad. Like, if you, if you touch someone's mail, that's crime.
We used to put out, we had to put out things when we were working on the road for the sewer line and then, and the kid put one in the mailbox.
You can't.
They came, the police came, they were in trouble. We can arrest you.
If you put flyers, you gotta tape, you can tape it on there, but you can't put it in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, eight, um, so, that's that, um, uh, anything else on, on that right now? So, next order of business, I'd, I'd really like to thank Nicole for all that she's done for the board.
Thank you.
You've held our group together here for the past six months, and, uh, we're gonna be lost for a while without you, and I wish you luck. Where you going? Do you have a?
I'm going to Better Living, uh, Better Community Living to be a medical coordinator.
Nice.
Where's, where is that?
It's in New Bedford.
Yeah, yeah, dude, right where, um, Regal Furniture was.
Um, no, it's down, well, they have multiple homes and stuff, but I'll be, uh, working in the office, um, on Union Street in New Bedford.
On Union?
Yeah.
Great, when do you start that?
After Christmas.
Yeah, oh, right away.
Of New Year's, yeah.
All right, well, it's good.
Taking a week off, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
I need it.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it, and, uh, we're gonna certainly miss you.
Thank you.
Um, as I mentioned, I don't know if everybody heard, we are interviewing on Thursday for Nicole's replacement, there's a few people, and there's also a land use administrator, um, that just showed up on today's email saying to replace, uh, or to, well, that was the original one we were going to replace for our Victoria, so, and is also still looking for a town planner, so, I mean. The only other item I have is, we have, nothing has come in, um, that would require our attention on January seventh.
Nope, just the continued thirty-two Middle Bar Claymont Way.
The continued thirty-two, uh, Middle Bar Road, but, but the developer has indicated that it has not sent another check-in to have a second set of plans reviewed.
No.
And has indicated.
Received plans either.
And so, and he said he wasn't gonna be available then anyway.
Right.
So.
Continued it to the first meeting in February.
So that's what I'd have to do. So I'm, what I propose is that I will have a one-man show and just, just have that meeting to continue that meeting until February, so that we don't have to meet, we don't, there's nothing else that's and nothing's gonna come in in the next two weeks.
No.
Over Christmas, you know. So, does that sound? So I just have to figure out how to do that, whether I have to be here, or whether I can, uh, do it from the comfort of my, uh, living room. Yeah, but we said, like, Nicole said, we, we said it was gonna be continued to the police station, so.
Uh, yeah. So I think you still have to come here, open it up, so, tell them it's continued again.
Why came here that one time?
Yes, yeah, I think it's gonna be similar to that.
So you did it?
I did it last time, we did, we canceled the meeting.
Okay, so you just.
You were on vacation.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah. You just came here all by yourself?
I don't even think you have to do Zoom, because we can, well, whoever can post it as just well, because you guys do vote, that you do both, so I'm not sure if you have to do a Zoom or not. You might be able to just do it as a police station meeting, and then one of you come here and.
For that meeting, if anybody comes after us for, for not doing that, fine, put me in jail, I mean, come on.
Yeah, so as long as one of you show up and say that it's gonna be continued to.
Is the agenda already out?
No.
No.
Saying we're doing Zoom and all?
No, no.
That's why I'm thinking, yeah, whoever's posting the agendas might be able to just post it as police station, and then not have to worry about setting any of this up either, so.
And they have to post it twenty, forty-eight hours?
Forty-eight hours, not including holidays or weekends. So usually, our Tuesday meetings, I post on Thursday afternoon. By Thursday afternoon, I post it so that I can send out meeting packets and everything by Friday morning.
Okay, so I'll have to, um, coordinate somebody to do that, and, and I'll just show up, I'll do it, that's fine, and we'll, we won't meet then until the seventh, and fourteen will be twenty-one?
Yes.
And we'll see what comes in. If anything comes in, if the office is open, if we have staff to do anything. So that's why I'm gonna push it at least till February fourth.
Yeah. You can always come back, uh, after your day job.
Right? I was already told I should do that.
Yeah.
On a couple of committees, I'm like, eh, maybe, maybe a little while later, maybe I will.
And minutes are already, we, we've already talked about that, the minutes are
Yeah.
are already recorded, so we have, we'll have whoever takes over, we'll be able to, uh, get those and, and post them. At the very least, probably, we should we'll have to meet, I don't know what the rule is. You said something about four, is it four meetings you can't be behind or something?
Yeah, and today was the fourth meeting, so we're definitely behind on minutes.
Yeah.
So hopefully, the recording clerk that they did, um, appoint to these three boards will be able to catch everyone up by the January, well, it'll be the second meeting in January to catch you guys up.
Yeah, that's fine. If not, we'll do it in February. I mean, I don't know if I would hold a meeting just to approve minutes.
Right.
You know, that's kinda, that's kinda.
Yeah, I don't think you have to.
We used to take like, uh, when I first got on the board, we used to take like a month or two off with Kevin.
He was easy.
Right, I think it was in the winter, winter and summer, we took August off or something. Were you on?
Yeah, I was the associate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't doing too much of that. And I don't, yeah, okay. Uh, anybody else have anything they wanna bring up? Cool, so I'll need a motion and a second to adjourn.
We'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, eighteen forty-three is the time, great. All right, thank you.